For your peace to be in this room, Lord give each one the words that they need to say and keep everyone's mind calm. Lord strengthen them that they can stand up for what they need to stand up for and, Lord, make them of one mind and one accord, work together. Lord, we just thank you that the city and the county and all the departments are working so well and at this time of year when everything is so beautiful outside with the lights, let us continue with that throughout the year. Lord, we ask that you would take each board that's being presented tonight. Lord, if these are the people you want on these boards, we ask that you would give everyone peace and satisfaction on their vote for them. All the other things that are coming before the board tonight, we ask that you would be with each one, Lord, in clear thinking. Lord, give them a sound mind. Lord, give them the, what they need tonight, Father, to vote the way that would be the best for our county and we thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Stephen Suckrie lives and pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dwayne Fowler.
Here.
Here.
Jamie Kinniston.
Here.
Mike Nunnery.
Here.
Roseanne Ward.
Here.
Jerry Price.
Here.
Terry King.
Here.
Keith Arnold.
Here.
Stephen Stokes.
Here.
Marty Douglas.
Here.
Deborah Bane.
Here.
Kenneth Miller.
Here.
Rocky Preston.
Welcome.
Brett Burke.
Here.
Frank Lashley.
Lashley.
Gary Farr.
Here.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Douglas.
Take it.
All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? On any of our voice votes tonight, when I ask if anyone opposes, please say if you oppose because if you do, then we will stop and we'll do a roll call vote. Next is the citizens forum. Debbie Baldwin, you're recognized.
I'm Debbie Baldwin. I'm a city alderman. I live in the city limits. Just want to thank each and every one of you new and returning commissioners for being ready for a new start for our county. In this Christmas season, my wish list goes like this. I wish the school board would put their meetings on YouTube or their website. I wish we could trust our elections all the way to Nashville. I wish if someone can't do a budget, that they would ask for help and stick with it. And I wish continued cooperation with Mayor Ward and all the commissioners, the staff, department heads, grant writers, state departments, Oval Blue, whatever, whoever. And my biggest wish is all is for our kids. My biggest wish is to let our children be children. In case you're not aware, the third part of the COVID money that goes to the school has strings attached, like mental health workers, that are just looking for kids in school that have mental issues that they can get on payroll. I have, for instance, I have a family member who their child was going to sleep in class. Nobody called the parent. Nobody asked the child with a parent present. The next thing the parents knew, they had DHS at their door. The child was pressured by the DHS person until she said, "Well, there'd been an incident with pot at school," murmured that week. The only thing she could think of, "Well, I smell pot when I go to sleep." Her parents don't do pot. She was going to bed at night and getting on her phone and staying up all night. She wasn't going to bed, but did the teachers ask the parents? Parents had no idea that's what the child was doing. They won't close the case now. They didn't find a thing in the home, not one thing. The child is clean. The house is clean. They have food in the cabinets. The mother and father both have a job. In fact, the mother works for the school system. But they won't close the case because they want the child to go to government counseling, not their pastor counseling, government counseling. I just wish we could change some of the rules that go on there for our children because this is not fair to them. She was just staying up watching stuff on YouTube. She didn't know she was going to get everybody in trouble for nothing, but yet she's having to suffer for it by going to counseling every week, missing her class where she should be learning. You're taking her out of a regular class to go to counseling. If, if the government pays for your counseling, then the government is the one that's going to get the updates on it. You aren't as a parent or grandparent or great-grandparent going to hear anything about And this is very troubling to me. I just wish that we had more oversight on our school system, that things like this would not continue because this is not the first case. This happens a lot that nobody hears about. So I would like for y'all to maybe question some things with this COVID money especially. The last, the last of the COVID money is the one that's got the strings attached. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Debbie. Next is the commissioners forum. Do we have a commissioner who wants to speak?
Yes, I do.
You're recognized.
I'll start by wishing everybody a Merry Christmas. It might not always appear, but I really do enjoy working with all of y'all. I wouldn't call it, it's an honor being here, being a part of this group. I'm asking some commissioners to realize and understand we made a mistake last month. I hope to say some words and have you rethink a decision that was made. I hope to show you reason. A mistake in removing Ward Plant from Benton, Decatur, Special Sewer District. Other commissioners, I hope for you to please get past your biased, rigid opinion of Ward Plant based off of something you heard, something he said, or even an action he took under his former mayor. Rethink your decisions and now I'm going to try to accommodate y'all with some accomplishments and activities he's been involved in. In one of his first actions as board chairman, he oversaw and implemented rate modification, which not only created a positive cash flow for the sewer district, but it also eliminated the annual debt service contribution requirements from both to Decatur and Benton counties, thereby saving both counties approximately $62,000, I'll say it again, saving both counties $60,000 a year. This is a lot of stuff I didn't know about long ago. I do remember that we were making payments to the sewer district because they could not self-fund theirselves. Now they are. Moving on. Ward met extensively with representatives from Love's. He helped address all the questions related to local development requirements and approvals. Ward was able to provide major contributing factors in the award of a 100% grant for improvements to the Benton, Decatur, Special Sewer District wastewater system totaling $715. The upgrades and improvements are essential to the facility's ability to continue to serve and more importantly, to accommodate additional growth and development along 641. Ward was able to assist with securing additional funding through the American Rescue Plan Act, create significant additional capacity to accommodate new development. Ward has continued serving as the point man and primary contact for Benton, Decatur, Special Sewer District. He has developed an extensive list of contacts with state and federal organizations that can play a central role in the future developments at our interstate exit. He has implemented an ongoing maintenance and operation program to ensure that all points within the system are continuously accessible. During periods of heavy rainfall in which portions of the sewer system were overflowing and discharge of all sewage, Ward mobilized equipment, generators, generators and workforce labor to help prevent damage to local businesses as well as the environment. One more point. Ward's efforts included assistance in the development of a complex application of T-DOT, working with engineers in the creation of plans and specifications with the proposed scope of work, assisting with the development and securing of the required access permit, the documentation and required commitment of operational responsibilities. Benton County is the second person to be allowed to build a roadway off of the interstate and go through a T-DOT fence. That project dramatically improved accessibility to the plant site, eliminated delivery of chemicals and materials through residential areas. I ask one of 10 of you commissioners that opposed Ward last month, I ask you to reconsider. I ask you tonight to make a motion to reconsider. This motion needs a second. Anybody can say a second, but the motion has to be made by someone who opposes him. It can be debated and it requires a majority vote. Finish it up now. The newspaper will be provided with a list of Ward Plant's accomplishments. And yes, we all know Ward had help, but guess what? Ward brought that help with him. The help he had, he brought with him. That being said, Chairman, I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner?
I would like to say.
Okay. Everybody, we still have five minutes. I've got to.
I probably won't take the five minutes. I just want to bring everybody's attention to a problem that I have out there where I live. And the main problem is, is with the sewer being put out there beside me. And I have had to deal with this for a long time. I went to City Hall over the smell coming from that place when they spray the trees and whatever they're doing, and I have no idea what it's doing to my well water. I don't drink well water. I have city water, but still I shouldn't have to be concerned about what's going into the ground and could possibly going into, going into my well. I went to City Hall and it was, the smell was blamed on everything but that sewer out there. And I even wrote the EPA last year, of course, I know with all the governmental agencies being locked down and blah, blah, blah. I haven't heard back, but I'm going to write them another letter because I'm telling you the smell is enough to gag a maggot. It is absolutely horrible. I am outside all the time and that sewer thing is right across the road from me. There's no way to get away from it. And I mean, I can't even describe, there's not a word to describe the foul stench that comes when they go up there and spray them trees and stuff. How it ended up out there beside me, I'll never know, but I'm going to pursue whatever avenue I have to to get this, something done about this because even people have come up to my house and got out of their car and said, "What is that stench?" And you've got a gas leak or something? I don't have a gas leak. It's that sewer out there beside my house. And I'm going to see if I can find some way to get a hold of the Environmental Protection Agency to get something done about it. I may have to call Aaron Brockovich. I don't know.
Can I address that? I'd like for you to go to the city treatment plant out here on Lake Street and just talk to the guys and see where that's pumped from. There's three ponds that the sewer goes into. The first one, it settles. It overflows into a second one. The third one is clear water with fish actually living in it. And it used to just go into the creek there until we had that 50-year flood, but when we had that 50-year flood, they had to do something else with the water instead of it going into the creek because it washed out the first two ponds. So the affluent water that's going out is pH neutral, no smell, fish are living in it. That's what's being pumped out there. They're not pumping any sewer to that part of, you know what I'm saying? That's just a clear water dispersment. So you might want to go out there and look at it and have them to show you around that area and maybe find where the smell is coming from because there's no smell coming from that water. And this don't have anything to do with the county. We're not doing it in the city. But I would urge you to go out there and let them show you around so you can see actually what's being pumped out there.
Well, it's only at certain times whenever they're doing that.
It could be your neighbor's septic tank. It could be a bunch of different things. So before you jump into EPA and all that, go out and look at their facility and see what they're actually doing.
This isn't a recent thing. It's been going on for a couple of years, but I will do that and I'll see if I can't figure out where that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Since we're in the commissioners forum, I'd like to say something. First of all, Ward Plant wasn't removed from the board. His term expired October 1st, 2022. And I know that we all appreciate the work that Mr. Plant did up there. I'm sure everybody up here could say that they appreciate it, but we also have citizens in Holliday that is willing to volunteer, they're educated, and they're willing to go up there and work also. So I don't think that we should say that he is the only one that can go up there and do anything because we have others that are willing. And as far as reconsidering the resolution, Rocky, I hate to tell you that you're wrong because if we reconsider a resolution, the motion has to be made by the prevailing side and it has to be done on the same night of the meeting. So that's over. We can't reconsider it. And as far as I'm concerned, the motion was voted on. 18 commissioners were here. They all voted. It was fair. It's over and done.
Appreciate your words.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on. We need approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Motion to approve.
Of a motion?
Mr., you just have to have something.
Okay. Will you hold that motion?
Yes, I will.
Mayor Ward wants to speak.
I don't really have anything to say, but I wanted Jennifer Weekly to come up and give y'all a real quick update on what's going on with some of the other things in the county. Promise it won't take but a minute.
I think we all enjoy hearing from Jennifer.
Well, I hope so. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Merry Christmas. Happy to see you all. We'll talk about three things real quickly. One is a motion that you have tonight to allow Mayor Ward to complete the negotiations we have on an industry that wants to purchase a building and some property at the industrial park. You've got that in your hands and you know that. The second one is that on December the 1st, Mayor Ward, Tony Brewer and I got to go to Nashville and ask for a site development grant. It has to go toward a specific project and this one, we were working on the Smith property, which is out on 70 and the 70 bypass. And the media release came out today that the most you could get for due diligence on a piece of property you would like to work toward developing is $100,000 and we got that. So we are very, very pleased to have that and it means probably that we will go forward with a rail study first because rail-adjacent property is rare in the valley. Rail-adjacent property that big, that's the only one in the valley. And so that makes us a highly marketable piece of property and it will still be valuable if the rail doesn't work out, but we need to know. It changes how we market it. It changes who might want it. But whatever we're going to figure out with it, a company whose name we do not know has chosen us as a top three contender to come look in January. They're only looking at three sites and we are one of the three. So we go to Nashville one afternoon in January and then the next day they come here and look at the site. So we've got the one that's looking at the industrial park. We've got $100,000 toward due diligence on the Smith property and we're in the top three for a second industry that is looking at us. I consider that a really excellent day's work. I don't know about y'all, but that makes me really happy. While I have you here, is there anything you'd like to ask about? Anything we want to talk about while I'm up here? Yes, sir.
A company that you don't know the name of.
Yes, sir.
Looking at three different sites.
Yes, sir.
How much does, how much of a role is TVA involved in their decision?
This company is so incredibly power-dependent that TVA is a 55% and that is part of why Smith is so incredibly valuable. Mayor Ward has discussed, I think with all of you, that while we were in Nashville asking for this SDG money, TVA told us that they feel they can get 200 megawatts of power at Smith in 36 months. And this is a company that has a slightly longer to get established timeframe set out than most. Lots of them are looking at 23, 24. This one is pushing their actual, we're fully operational to 30. So that would give TVA time to get that power where they need it. They don't need all their power at once. So some, it's all about water. If you're talking about food processing, it's all water. It's how much water you can get to them. But this one is very much power-dependent. And so the latest information we've learned about the power capacity at Smith is, it's critical. It's why they're looking at us. It's absolutely why they're looking at us. TVA is always a player, but when it's a heavy power dependency, they're more of a player. Does that help you?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Yes, sir.
I just want to say that everybody for years has said, "What do we need to do to get into treatment in county?" That's why here's what we've needed for years to get into.
You are very kind.
I know it.
I like it.
Give me $10.
But it's not, I promise you, it is not just me. It takes a team.
We needed an industrial recruiter for a year and now we've got one and I know she's very capable of doing what she does. She's been involved in the Chamber of Businesses and I know people who've worked with her for third years. They all speak very highly of her. She's doing a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much, but I can't do, this doesn't happen from one person. I absolutely assure you, this is the biggest teams and I call the mayor every day and whine about something. I promise.
I feel the same as Keith. Thanks for being on board and thanks for working with us.
Anything else? All right. Y'all holler at me if you need me. My office is at the chamber.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Do you have anything?
No.
Okay. My attorney?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. We'll go back to that motion made by Commissioner Stokes. Was a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Will you raise your hand because when I hear three seconds, I don't know who they are. Okay, this one, Mike Nunnery. Okay. All in favor of the minutes? Please say aye. Anyone opposed? Minutes approved. Need a motion and a second for the report of the public utilities.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Stokes.
Second.
By Commissioner, second by Commissioner Price. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
True.
Now we have a resolution, which is our first resolution, and the mayor has made a change in that resolution and I will let him explain that to you.
I'd like for y'all to change the name in this first resolution. I've had some discussion and since we have to print these resolutions a week or so ahead of time, there's sometimes some changes that need to be made and I hate that, but I'd like to change that from Dwayne Fowler to Brett Burke. If y'all could all write that on there and vote accordingly, I would appreciate that.
Okay. We need a motion and a second to bring it to the floor.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Stokes and a second by Miller. Do we have any questions?
Do I need to go ahead and make a motion to amend that officially to Brett Burke or?
No. It's the mayor's resolution and his appointment, so he can change it. So all in favor of Brett Burke being on the airport board? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that motion is carried. Resolution two is a resolution to appoint Bruce Martin to the Benton County Airport Board for a two-year term. Need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Stokes. Second by Price. Any discussion?
Are they here?
I would like to say something and I've asked everybody that we've appointed, that I've made appointments for, to always be here each month after you brought that up. Bruce fell out of his tree stand. He called me from Vanderbilt. He's got six broken ribs and a punctured lung, so he asked me to beg y'all's forgiveness for not being here, but he would really like to serve on the board.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of appointing Bruce Martin? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Resolution three is a resolution to appoint Mac Low to the Benton County Airport Board for a three-year term.
Motion. Second.
Raise your hands, please. I can't see. Motion by Arnold and a second by Miller. Any questions? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next is resolution four. A resolution to appoint Phil Davis to the Benton County Airport Board for a two-year term.
Motion.
Motion by Stokes.
Second.
Second by Douglas. Any questions? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved. Next is number five. A resolution to appoint Don Jordan to the Benton County Airport Board for a four-year term.
Motion.
Motion by Miller.
Second.
Second by Gary Farr. Any questions?
Can I stand up because I don't know who they are?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. If you want me to, that's Don Jordan and we also have Phil Davis.
Sorry?
We have Mac Low. So all in favor of Don Jordan? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution six. A resolution to appoint Alvin Smothers to the Benton, Decatur Sewer Board for a four-year term.
Motion. Second.
Okay. I will go with two of these of the first district, Commissioner Arnold and Commissioner Douglas. Okay. Any discussion?
I want to have some discussion.
Okay.
I appreciate what Rocky said. I fully agree with what he said about Ward, but I did not ask him to say that. I'm a firm believer that if you guys vote some wind down, I will never bring them back up to you. I want everybody to be happy. I want us all to work together, so that's why I brought a resolution up for a different appointment this month and I think that's the way we need to do it. And I appreciate if y'all will vote on this appointment.
Mr. Smothers is in the audience. Anybody got any questions for him? Okay. If there are none, if you're in favor of Mr. Smothers, vote aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? There are none, so that resolution is passed. Number 13 on your agenda is Resolution seven. It's a resolution to fill four vacancies on the Audit Committee. The nominations are Lisa, let's see, Lisa Holliday.
Let's get a motion so I can discuss it.
All right. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Stokes.
Second.
Second by Price. Okay. Now, the mayor would like to say something.
This is my fault. I do apologize, but doing research in the mayor's office, there's not a lot of information about appointments, so I thought we had four vacancies. We really only have three. So if y'all could draw a line through the very first one with Stanley Rowland, he was on the board, his term expired. He asked to not be reappointed, but I did not know that Lisa Holliday had been appointed by Randy Shannon during his term. So we really only have three and that's the bottom three that you'll be voting on. Is that clear? Anybody have questions?
It is clear. I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
In the past. In the past, we have been told that if you are an employee of the county, that you cannot serve on this board. Is that true or false?
I believe that's true.
Okay, well, Lisa is an employee of the county.
I didn't put her on there.
So, what do we do about it?
We'll have to ask the county attorney.
Okay.
No pressure.
My answer is, I don't know. We'll have to look into this.
No pressure. We'll work on this next month if it's a problem. I don't have a problem with her serving, but it's, I think it's civil service and audit are the two that have that stipulation. But like I said, I didn't make that appointment. So, we'll have to look into it. And I guess we'll charge the county mayor into finding out about that for us.
We'll take care of it.
Okay. And I want everyone to understand, I don't oppose Lisa being on it. I just know that there could be a law that says she can't. Okay, so now we'll move on to the other people are, for a one-year term, Jennifer Hedge. That's a reappointment. Two-year term would be Dana Ferguson. She would be a new one on there for three years. And Kevin Step, that would be a new one for four years. Does anyone have any, um, questions or for this? Okay, if there are none, then we will vote. Does, so, does everyone have it, your information? Okay. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
I do.
Okay. Then in that case, we will take a roll call vote. Please, Madam Clerk. Dwayne Fowler?
Yes.
Sonny Hall? I had marked him out, sorry. Phil Melton?
Yes.
Jamie Kinniston?
Yes.
Mike Nunery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Jerry Price?
Yes.
Terry King?
Yes.
Keith Arnold?
Yes.
Stephen Stokes?
Yes.
Marty Douglas?
Yes.
Deborah Bane?
No.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Brett Bird?
Yes.
Frank Lashley?
Yes.
Gary Furr?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Okay. Number 14 on your agenda is Resolution number eight. It's a resolution to rescind Resolution number 2022 1121-32 in reference to the mineral severance tax. Need a motion? Bring it to the floor.
Motion.
Motion by Stokes and second by Arnold.
Hey, Rocky, stand up, please.
Please, I'll stay seated.
Okay. Rocky brought this up in the last meeting. I guess it was last meeting. But come to find out, he was right even when the state was wrong. And all this is doing is rescinding the resolution. We were not going to divide the mineral severance tax. We were just going to give it all to the Highway Department because that's the way private law is, or current law is. But we have worked under a private act. And it had to be grandfathered in before 1983 or something like that. And it was in Benton County. So, we can split the mineral severance tax up any way we want to. And to rescind this resolution puts it back to exactly the way it was before last month, the way the Budget Committee passed it and the way this full commission passed it. Does that make sense? Under general law, uh, it all has to go to the Highway Department. But under a private act, the county commission can put it wherever they deem necessary. So, we're giving the Highway Department 157,500. And anything after that goes into the general fund if you're, uh, for us to be in compliance.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Thank you, Rocky.
Number 15 on your agenda is Resolution nine. A resolution to budget funds in the amount of $31,675.25 received from public auction within the Highway Department's budget.
Motion.
Motion by Stokes.
Second.
Second by Price. Any discussion or questions? I see nuns. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Number 16 on your agenda is a resolution to grant the county mayor permission and authority to enter into an agreement for the sale of property at the Benton County Industrial Park. We need a motion by Stokes. Um, motion by Miller. Any questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries. Moving right along pretty fast, aren't you?
You're doing good. We don't need all of that electronic stuff.
Number 17, which is Resolution 11, is a resolution to budget funds received from the Spark Grant to the school budget.
Motion.
Motion by Stokes. Need a second. Second by Arnold. Any questions about this one? I see nuns. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Number 18 is Resolution 12. A resolution to budget funds received from the USDA Child Nutrition Grant to the school's budget.
Motion.
Motion by Stokes.
Second.
Second by Douglas. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Number 19, which is Resolution 13. A resolution to move funds in the amount of $90,000 within the Sheriff's Department budget to cover a shortfall in overtime pay.
Motion.
Motion by Stokes. Second by Price. Any questions for the sheriff? I see none. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose it? Motion carries. A resolution to declare specified property in the possession of juvenile services as surplus property for the purpose of disposal.
Motion.
Need a motion by Stokes.
Second.
Motion by Miller. Any questions? Commissioner Keane?
On the computers, are they, do we know if their car drives been wiped clean or they just?
We don't have anybody here from that office, but I'll make sure they're wiped clean before they dispose of them.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Number 21 is Resolution 15. A resolution to move funds within the juvenile services budget to ensure proper funding due to staffing changes. Need a motion?
Mr. Sheriff, I'd like to make a motion to combine, um, Resolutions 15 and 16 as they're transferred to the budgets.
Okay. We have a motion to combine Resolution 15 and 16. I need a second. A second by Arnold. All in favor of combining the two resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, so now we will go back and vote on the two. We need a motion and a second then to approve the resolutions.
Motion.
Motion by Stokes.
Second.
Second by Price. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next is the appointing of notaries. Okay, we have one. It was Anita H. French. We need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Dwayne Fowler and second by Rocky Preston to approve Anita's notary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, we're down to number 24, which is any other business?
Mr. Sheriff, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow consideration for Resolution number 17.
Okay, do we have a second? Arnold? Want to take a roll call vote on this? Roll call vote, please.
Do you want to, uh, explain what happened there? Is that the transfer from the veteran services money?
It is.
Uh, what happened there is, uh, last month, we were going to transfer 18,000. That's about what I had figured it would be. I didn't take into consideration of vacation pay and a couple of other things. But it ended up bringing that down below the 18,000. And since we specified 18,000, the comp controller will catch us on that because we're only going to transfer about 15,500. So, if y'all could just amend that resolution to just say whatever's left in full-time to part-time, that's what I'd like to do.
I think he's already amended it in y'all's resolution, I believe. But, uh, have you Charlie? Or is that just what we need to do tonight?
I think he's already corrected it. But I was explaining why. It's less than what we voted on. But it was because a full-time employee that was leaving had to get their vacation pay and some comp time or something.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Roll call vote, please. Dwayne Fowler?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Jamie Kinniston?
Yes.
Mike Nunery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Jerry Price?
Yes.
Terry King?
I abstained.
Keith Arnold?
Yes.
Stephen Stokes?
Yes.
Marty Douglas?
Yes.
Deborah Bane?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Brett Bird?
Yes.
Frank Lashley?
Yes.
Gary Furr?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Okay, that was the motion to suspend the rules. Now, we need a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
Motion.
Motion by Stokes.
Second.
Second by Price to approve Resolution number 17 as it's written. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
I abstained.
Okay. Motion still carries. Do we have any other business? Commissioner Preston?
Thank you, Chairman. Last month, last month, the question was put with the question of gas prices. The, um, the mayor's office mailed a letter July 7th this summer to the governor's office, governor lead's office. There was a response dated August 31st, 31st from the Office of Attorney General. I have a few copies of them. I'll give them to the mayor if anybody wants one. You can get it from him. He can have more copies made. I hope and encourage you want to, uh, ask the question again because you've been really good at answering.
Yep.
Thank you, Chairman.
Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Who made the second? Who made the motion, the second, to adjourn? Somebody raise your hand, please. Dwayne Fowler.